We're going to get started now. Today is Thursday, April 10th, 2025. It's time has arrived at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay by Boon TV. If anyone is audio or visually recording, please acknowledge it this time. I see nobody in the audience. All items with the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. So the meeting is called to order. The first agenda item would be approval of the minutes from March 13th, 2025.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written from March 27.
March 13th.
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 Second from Catherine. Thank you. Anybody else? Any current?
Can I just, on my name, can we change that to Kovey from here forward? Because I'm going to be on the ballot. People are going to be totally confused who this person is. So make sure you use Kovey a lot.
Okay. We can do that. Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second? Any further comments from the board? We're going to do a roll call because we have one member of the board on Zoom. So with that, Amanda?
I'm trying to remember if I was there.
No.
You are not.
You were not.
So you're abstaining? Thank you. Okay, John?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Yes.
Ducks?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the chair. I'm excused also from abstaining. I was not here. I was in much better climate than here. So first item on the agenda is an application for modification of special permit. 0429B, 21 Canal Street, AKA 21 Hunters Brook Road. The modification reduces the medical office building from three stories to two stories, eliminates the assisted living facility, and adds 17 townhouses for a total of 32 townhouses. The project is located in the Senior Care Overlay District, Business B2 and Residential R40 districts. Eliza?
Thank you. Thank you very much and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney at Nuttner McLennan &amp; Fish, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Joining me today is Greg Werson, who's the Vice President of Green Seal, the consulting engineer for this project. He is also a principal of the entity that owns the property. And then Stu Clark, also from Green Seal, is here if you have any questions. This site is probably very familiar to many of you on the board. My firm has been working with the applicant on this property for many years. I think originally, we were at town meeting in 2018 to have the Senior Care Overlay District, which we worked with the planning board on the language, went to town meeting, and was approved in May of 2018. Subsequent to that, we filed this project with the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact and went through that lengthy Cape Cod Commission process. And the project that you've approved was approved by the Commission in July of 2019. Subsequently, we were before the planning board in December of 2019, where you issued a site plan special permit for the project, and that decision is still active and alive and has been extended over the years. So what we're here today is to talk about a modification to the design and program on the site. It is, we think, a less intense use than what has been previously permitted by this board. We did present the proposed changes to the Cape Cod Commission, and it has modified its development of regional impact approval to match the project that we're proposing before you tonight. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to Greg, who's got some slides to walk you through to remind you of what you've already approved and then walk through the changes that are being proposed tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Greg Werson. Eliza might not know that, but my principal status is gone. I am no longer an owner of this development nor an owner of Green Seal Environmental. But I do still work for Green Seal Environmental, and I am very intimate with the project. And so I'm going to go through some slides and kind of take us to where we were and where we're going and just talk about where we're minimizing the project with respect to many facets of the project. And I believe Jen is going to be, or Sean is going to be my slidekeeper. So once they get that going. I do have some of the plans on board. I'll try to face them to you folks. If there's something that matches the slide, just let me know and I can get through here. So before the board, we're in for a modification of our site plan review and special permit application, as Eliza said, which was previously approved somewhere around 2019, pre-COVID, pre-Zoom, pre-Teams, and everything like that. Next slide, please, Sean. For those of you who don't remember, we had three facets of this development, one being a medical office building up to the northwest. It was three stories. I'll get to the square footage. I believe it was somewhere in around 38,000, 39,000 square feet. We had about 100,000 four-story gross floor area, 100,000 square foot, four-story gross floor area assisted living facility that was going to house 90 beds. And we had 15 two-bedroom townhomes that entered through Hunters Brook Road. We had a cul-de-sac. There was also some planned, I would call it compacted earth. What's the technical term of the compacted earth? Reinforced compacted earth so that we could have fire department access, not only from the bridge, but we could have secondary means, especially being an assisted living facility. Next slide. This is just a site plan of the old development. Primary access being over the bridge. We've gone through CONCON. There was no taking of the existing bordering vegetated wetlands. There was a taking of some of the outside buffer area, which we have an approved notice of intent that runs out at the end of 2025. But with the Permit Extension Act, we have the ability to extend it. Just shows the assisted living facility and the footprint. The parking areas to the south. There was a wastewater treatment plant proposed to the very south of the large parking area. You can see the cutout with the retaining wall. And then it shows the 15 two-bedroom townhomes to the very south of the facility, kind of bifurcated from the proposed medical offices and assisted living facility. Next slide, please. So today, what we have before you is a minimization of the project. The minimization consists in two areas, although there is an expansion in one area. We are requesting 32 townhomes, some of them two-bedroom, some of them one-bedroom, for a total of 50 bedrooms. We have an approximate, and I'll get to the exact square footage, but I believe it's 35,000 or 36,000 square feet. I have a comparative analysis of what was there before. This building, if we look at the old rendering, it used to be a three-story building. It is now a two-story building. So with respect to visual aesthetics and everything, visual impacts have been reduced. We also took out the large assisted living facility that was fairly big. I don't know the exact footprint of it. I know it was approximately 100,000 square feet of gross floor area. So very noticeable. It's not in the picture anymore. We are showing that there's, that's a solar on each of the developments. Before, we didn't have much solar presented. We had more of a different, a little different style roof where we couldn't fit much solar on the roof. So we are, have agreed with the Cape Cod Commission to provide and solarize not only the individual townhomes, but the medical office building. We were going to buy renewable energy credits from an off-site source. If anyone knows solar as much as I've painted through it the last 10 years, it's changing from SREC 1 to SREC 2 to the SMART program. There's actually no program right now, and who knows where it will be when the DOE are promulgating the new regulations. So we decided to take that on ourselves. Some homes will have more solar than others. It really depends on orientation, azimuth, and things like that. So we've changed the, you know, the accessways. Let's talk a little bit about the accessways. The accessways have not changed. So ingress and egress from Hunters Brook Road, as well as ingress and egress from Canal Road, have not changed. They're in the exact same location as what was previously approved. What has changed is the addition of townhomes and a cut through into the parking lot. We did provide a signage plan to the planning board. We're shrinking it down, so we're only making it like 12 feet wide or something like that. When it goes into the parking lot, there'll be one-way signs posted just to allow the residents, if they wanted to get onto Canal Road, that they don't need to use Hunters Brook Road. We just thought it would be a benefit with respect to the neighborhood on Hunters Brook Road. And we'll talk about the traffic study in a little bit. Next slide, please. Not very visible. It shows the entrance, how it's basically a right turn only coming on to Canal Road. Doesn't allow for really left-hand turns. Shows the parking spaces. Besides the 32 townhomes, it does depict a clubhouse, very small, and we'll have a little maintenance shed there too, just so the community can use that. And we're proposing some form of court to the, we'll call it, to the northwest of it. Next slide, please. So with respect to a comparative analysis of where we were and where we are now, previously, we had proposed 15 two-bedroom townhomes for a total of 30 bedrooms. We are now proposing 22-bedroom townhomes and 12 one-bedroom townhomes for a total of 50 bedrooms. As I said, oh, let me just make sure my ringer's off. I might get a grocery list or something. The medical office building that I spoke about before, three stories, was 38,180 gross footage, square foot area, whereas now we're cutting it down to about 35,000 square feet and making it two stories. The assisted living facility, as I mentioned before, was four stories, 90 beds, 90,000 square feet of gross floor area. In this modification, we're not proposing any assisted living facility. Wastewater use, we had a total wastewater use of approximately 23,000 gallons per day. We were going to do a wastewater treatment plant. Because one day, we do intend to bifurcate the two facilities. We have enough squiff, we have enough frontage, we have enough thing to meet all the zoning requirements. If it was ever, if we ever format, you know, did an A&R plan with respect to this site, it could be subdivided into the medical office building as one lot and the assisted living facility as another. We have cut the wastewater generation down to 9,970 gallons per day, thus not needing, having a need for a wastewater treatment plant. I'll get into nitrification and nutrient loading in just a minute. Our water use is going from 22,850 gallons per day down to less than 10,000 gallons per day. There was a condition, I believe, by Cape Cod Commission, as well as the North Sagamow Water District, that if we do intend to irrigate, we have to put in our own well. So we won't be using North Sagamow Water District for any type of irrigation. We'd have to do that on our own. Parking. We used to have 175 spaces for the medical office building, 30 spaces for the assisted living facility. That was kind of communal. We felt that the assisted living facility, when they had visitors and things like that, would be on the weekend, where more so the medical offices are not as open as much on the weekend. So, and then we had 30 spaces for the townhomes. We're presently proposing 157 spaces, which meets the zoning requirements, 64 spaces for the 32 townhomes, and seven communal spaces up at the clubhouse area. Next slide, please. This is a little comparative analysis on, you know, roof area and impervious surfaces. So previously, we had, as presently proposed, we have more roof area. And the reason being is that instead of having a four-story building, we have townhomes spread out. So we obviously gain more roof area associated with that. And the footprint of the medical office building is slightly larger than the three-story building. So we went up about, you know, a little over a tenth of an acre in roof area. But when you add the other impervious surfaces, such as concrete surfaces, bituminous concrete, as well as concrete sidewalks and quartz, we are actually cutting down the other 3.4 acres of impervious surfaces down to 2.96. So we're losing about three tenths of an acre of impervious surfaces with respect to the minimization of this development. Next slide, please. Nitrogen loading. This is why I have smart guys like Stu next to me. Stu's been working on the new YMCA infallments and working with a company called Clean2, which is the system that we're proposing. And they're permitted on the Cape. They've done somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 or plus studies. All the ones that have a greater gallonage is called, you know, there's a pilot study permitting process that they have to go through. So cumulatively, we have 970 gallons per day of flow. There's going to be two separate and distinct systems for this facility, one for the medical office buildings, and we'll call it one for, might be different leaching areas, but we'll call it one for the townhomes. And we're looking at the groundwater discharge permit. Our discharge was 0.9526 pounds per day of nitrogen. If we use the provisional use, which is basically a conservative number, our nitrogen loading goes down to about 9.144 pounds per day of nitrogen associated with our flowage. If we use their raw data in their sampling, their average test rates are actually not 11 milligrams per liter, but down nearing around 11.4. So if we do achieve that, the nitrogen loading could be reduced by approximately 35%. We're not in a nitrogen-sensitive area there. We're not in any specialized watershed resources associated with North Sagamow Water District and anything. But I did want to present that what we're proposing with respect to the IA systems are at, or they will be less impactful than what we were previously proposing with the larger development. Next slide, please. We had two things that we did. I want to first let you know that our old trips, where it said existing trips, it says 1,762 trips, predominantly most impacted by the medical office building. The assisted living facility was the second, and the over 55 townhomes was third for 762 trips. We were requested by the Cape Cod Commission because they have what's called an ITE manual, which stands for International Traffic Engineers Standards or something like that. And between 2019 and 2024, when we started going through this process, they actually changed the addition from the 10th addition to the 11th addition, which actually changes and increases the amount of traffic anticipated to be on a site. So we didn't use the 10th manual, we used the 11th. And we do have a traffic reduction. Medical office building, as you can see, we're reducing it by, you know, call it 3,000 square feet. So like 9%, but the traffic hasn't gone down 9%. That's why it's still 1422 and 1412. The assisted living facility is zero, and then the over 55 townhomes, although we're going from 30 bedrooms to 50 bedrooms, they've more than doubled. And so you can see, it seems like fuzzy mess. It's just because of the manual that we had to look at to look at traffic. So thus, you know, we have a little less than a 10% reduction of total traffic associated with the project as a whole. During the Cape, next slide, please. During the Cape Cod Commission hearing, some of the commissioners asked, although they don't have necessarily the whole purview of localized impacts, and I believe Jim was on one of the meetings, we did do a traffic analysis on Hunters Brook Road in the driveway since we are adding more townhomes. And so this is a level-of-service study that was done by formerly McMahon &amp; Associates, now Bowman. As you can see, the previous build, you know, everything is service level A. That's, you know, they rank from service level A all the way down to F. If you, I'm sure you've all looked at traffic reports. And then we look at delays. And the delays have gone up from our previous build. You know, we go from seven seconds to 7.3 and eight seconds to 8.4 in the AM and about the same in the PM. But what you should know is that the level of service that we're talking about is leaving the facility. It is not the level of service on Hunters Brook Road. The level of service on Hunters Brook Road remains the same. This is because they have to come to a stop, look at this traffic, and then they egress that facility. And I did provide the memorandum associated with these traffic studies as part of the submittal to the planning board. Next slide, please. We did meet with the Cape Cod Commission about mitigation. We have a lot of traffic signals upgrades associated with signage and sign lanes on, I think that's the corner of Plymouth and Meeting House Lane, the traffic light that connects to Route 3 and then goes across down to the McDonald's, which is Canal Street, where our main point of egress is. Once you go under the overpass, there's another traffic light. It always seems to be green. The people coming off seem to wait a long time. And then up by turning into the development that has the condos and the, I forget the name of that development down in there in Sagamow Beach, but just a little after those traffic lights. We requested to remove the adaptive technology upgrade across the bridge down by Market Basket. All those things are going to change anyways with the new bridges. We'll also have to meet with the Cape Cod Commission. We know that, you know, if we're looking at this, that the, you know, the bridge is going on the westerly side of the highway. So we want to ask them if there's any adaptive signal controls or upgrades associated with it. Do they want it escrow until they figure out what they're doing? Whether they want it installed? We don't really know, but, you know, we can keep the board posted. That's, it's obviously a requirement of the Cape Cod Commission. I'm just letting you know what our ask will be. It's not an ask to reduce anything. It's an ask, do you want to spend $75,000 on this light? And then they change the construction patterns a year or two later. I don't know.
They're dealing with mass DOT, so don't expect an answer.
Well, we have multiple mass DOT permits here for this that are still current. We have our mass DOT permit for a temporary curb cut, which we don't need anymore. We have the mass DOT permit for our ingress and egress associated with the medical office building. And we also have a joint mass DOT permit with the North Sagamow Water District to run and loop the water lines so that the construction of the townhomes behind the fire department did some water line improvements down that way. This will kind of sync everything together and loop it, boost pressure and everything like that. So North Sagamow Water District, not only will they, we'll go in for a modified. They actually call it an order of conditions there. I always confuse that with CONCON, but they call it an order of conditions as well. So they will have more capacity with respect to the water service because our order condition allows for 22,000 gallons and we'll request for 10. So give about 12,000 gallons a day of capacity back to the North Sagamow Water District. Next slide, please. Just to talk about things that aren't changing at all, or, you know, we didn't propose anything, is changes to resource areas. Everything's in the same location associated with resource areas with invasive species. We're still implementing an invasive species program. Believe it or not, I believe it was a year and a half we submitted for a conservation restriction to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. We finally get comments back today? This week. And the reason why we did that is we had other open space that we sold to ICEWIM so that they can do their landfill expansion. And so we have a joint open space deal with them. But once we get this conservation restriction, we'll actually give another 2.4 acres for use for the landfill for their open space requirements. And that deal is already done. We already closed on it, and everyone's on the same page. Where it says component bridge, I just meant that it's not like, where it says none proposed, I just meant there's no changes proposed. We are proposing a bridge. So you could read it two different ways. We're proposing the bridge, but it's in the exact same location as it was. Phasing. We are changing the phasing, and the reason being is we want to build the townhomes first and use this northerly area. I'm going to, just going to point at this and I'll turn it around. Use the northerly area as a staging area and then build the townhome first because we are looking into modular construction. Not only is modular construction cost-effective, but it's also time-effective. It's also noise-effective. It's very effective for getting a project done in a shorter period of time. So we've done a lot of research and got a lot of bids on modular construction. It will not change the, it will not change the aesthetics or the build. I mean, you spec that, they come, they put them together. And so we can use that as our laydown area, take our cranes, sit them in place instead of using conventional construction techniques with, you know, air guns and compressors and everything like that. I mean, still will be some of that because you've got to see walls and things like that when you put them together. So our phasing is planned now north to south. I mean, south to north versus north to south. We were going to build the assisted living facility because that was the biggest component in the medical office building. So we're going to phase that, the polar opposite. And the other thing is, we still want to have our paved course and our bridge to get, let people use the roadways and to get out on to Canal Road. It just makes sense to do it that way, much more effective. And then staging and components or everything are farther away from the southerly community. Next slide, please. Just wanted, I went through some density compliance comparisons. So I, you know, compared it to the zoning bylaw and specifically a lot of the bylaw, minimum density requirements and maximum density requirements under the SCOD. So the minimum usable open space vegetated area needs to be greater than 20%. We have well over greater than 20%. Some of it will be in a conservation restriction as well. Lot frontage, I think cumulatively, we have about 700 and something feet of lot frontage. So it has enough lot frontage on both Hunters Brook Road as well as Canal Street. So, or Canal Road, I should say. So we have much greater than 150 feet of the requisite frontage. Maximum building height is 50 feet. I think in the staff report, I believe it's somewhere around 44.6 feet to. around 44.6 feet to peak at the, on the medical office building. So, we, we meet the SCOD requirement there. Maximum lot coverage needs to be less than 40%. And our proposed development with respect to maximum lot coverage, which means everything, right? It will be less than 40%. The other thing was, we had to take a look at, you know, if we set up, if we set up potential A and R lot lines, so we took a look at it to see how it worked. We know that we need to be greater than three acres, this is an 11.5, 11.95 acre parcel requirements, three acres. But you also have, we set and we worked with actually the town because we were looking at minimum density requirements of some things that were across the street and everything, which was about 6,000 square feet. So, we increased it just to 8,000 square feet. So, for the 32 units in that landmass, they will be greater than 8,000 square feet per unit. So, we also meet that requisite requirement of the SCOD. Next slide. Very similar to the old, the old requirements, you know, color type. The only difference is, is with respect to height, footprints generally about the same, but we, we didn't change any of the, you know, construction materials, K-Cod Commission wanted it K-Cod character. So, we're keeping essentially everything the same, but at least you have some general semblance of that there's really no changes besides the height. And, and location, the footprint's basically within the same footprint of the old medical office building. Next slide, please. This is just a picture of some of the townhomes. I don't think I have this on the plan, but you did receive this. This is a layout of where the one bedrooms and two bedrooms are on the, at the facility. And then, you know, it correlates with certain things. We also did a fire department sweep analysis with respect to the requisite fire engine truck going over the bridge, going through the MOB, and also going through the neighborhood and out to the, out to the MOB. So, we meet all the sweep analysis with respect to that. Next slide, please. That's just another picture of the townhomes. We can go to the next slide. This is a, a picture of, oh, sorry, one more. This is a clubhouse, which was centrally located on the site. We'll have a little fitness center, an area for functions, two ADA compliant bathrooms. We'll have a maintenance area and maybe a sales office at first for the, for the townhomes. And as I said earlier, we provided seven, seven parking spots for that, you know, so we either have overflow parking or if people have a function there, at least there's some parking for people that need to have that facility a little more accessible. With that, I'll, I'll leave it for, for questions with the board. If there's any type of straight engineering questions, I have Stu there, who's my backup. Sometimes I fly at a 1,000-foot level and not on the ground level.
Thank you, Greg. Any comments from the board before we get, Corinne?
Couple of questions. On the number of units, how many affordables are there?
It's 12 and a half percent. So, even though we're doing 32, I believe that we're setting aside four.
Four?
Yes. And that is also in the, the K-Cod Commission DRI modification approval, so it's set in stone.
And will there be any retail uses at all in that medical building?
Not that I envision.
Does it would be associated like a pharmacy or?
Have never, haven't never talked about that. You know, I do know that, like, if you go to Jan Sebastian Way and they have the little pharmacy like behind the counter, it's not a drive-through, they don't sell a lot of retail stuff, I can't say that there wouldn't be something like that in there. But if you're talking about like a CVS with a drive-through with all goods, there's been zero talk about that. You know, if there was something that was specialized, or, or just like right up the street, I believe there's a little pharmacy there that you have to walk in and access where Baystate Physical Therapy is, there could potentially be something like that in there that's associated with medical, but not something associated with quote retail medical, where they make all their, you know, where they make the 100% markup of all the goods that, you know, post, post where they hand your prescriptions out. No.
That's it? Anybody else from the board?
I have a question.
Catherine?
Yes. My question is on wastewater. You said there wasn't a need for a treatment plant?
Correct.
But, so, so the North Sagamore Water District can handle all of this addition?
North Sagamore Water District is for potable water?
Okay.
Not wastewater.
Okay.
Yes. And so, what we're changing is from our own onsite wastewater plant, which would have been coupled with all the facilities together?
That's what I was.
To individual innovative alternative septic systems.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doc?
Yeah, on the site plan proposed, up at the north near Building 7, there's a road linking that development to the main office building, and the road is pinched down. Is that gated?
It is, it is not gated. We wanted to pinch it down and assign it with do not enters in, in one way right there. And the reason-
So, the medical wouldn't go into the residential?
Yeah, it's only, it's only an egress point, not an ingress.
Okay.
And we want to pinch it down. If, if you want a certain width on that and condition the width, that's, we just want it big enough for like a fire apparatus or, you know, an ambulance to go through. We don't want egress out of there. But to do a, a gate with a key card or anything like that, especially if there's a visitor or something like that, it's just not going to work.
I think we agree that it, that it's going to be open, and it would seem a logical thing that maybe a third of the residences on the northern side might very well exit to Canal because their businesses on, on the connector roads. That would be a good thing.
Yeah, but potentially, we didn't, we didn't take that into consideration when we did the traffic study associated really with Huntersbrook Road, you know, but-
In terms of minimizing the impact on Huntersbrook, that's a plus.
Correct, that's why we did it. Because in the past, it was the mechanically stabilized earth is what it was. The mechanically stabilized earth had, had like just a crash bar that they could, they could bank through, and it would just, it would just be for like an emergency situation. But we thought with adding the 20 extra bedrooms associated with this development, that we'd give those users of the townhomes the opportunity not even to hit Huntersbrook Road on egress only.
Okay, thank you.
I had written down the exact same question that you asked, Doc, was how are you going to make that a left turn only on, from Canal Road out? How are you going to make that a left turn only? Is it going to be like curb the road?
Yes. I can, I can show you one, probably walk away from my mic, I know it's bad.
Well, we got this one here.
We're going to pull the slide up.
There's a traffic island with a curvature.
Okay. So, you got the D-island at the end of it?
Yes.
Which will direct people, perfect.
That's correct.
Is it right turn only or left turn only?
Right turn only. It'll be right turn only and not a left turn.
There's a smaller version right there.
I could-
This is directed.
Oh, I see.
Right turn only. Little right turn only.
Earth is always going to be well.
If they want to exit the residential units and go down to Canal, they come down on the whole separate route.
These residential units? Absolutely. Absolutely. Can't disagree with that.
All the jobs coming down on Huntersbrook Road, if they want to go down to Canal.
Sir, if you're going to ask questions, you're going to have to come up to the mic because people in the-
I was waiting for that time to start.
Okay.
When they ask questions, I'm not going to be, I just can't sit right now. I had spinal surgery three weeks ago, but I can come back to the mic after.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions. And the first basic one I have is, because I've dealt with it over the last couple of years, is why the elimination of the assisted living?
The elimi, yeah, the elimination of the assisted living facility is, there's a lot of changes with really, well, like quarantine rooms?
Everything.
Air filtration, the way that the insurance has worked, there's, there's really a lot. But that's not only it. When we, when we thought to get a, an operator and an owner together that could properly cross-pollinate and get a deal together, I'm going to tell you, I've, I've sat in a many meetings and it was like oil and water, and, and Bob just said, hey, let's get rid of our cash cow and let's just, you know, look at some townhomes and reduce the project size. And that's what he directed me to do.
Let's see, what else do I have? Mass DOT, good luck with everything with them?
Yeah, we're, we're approved.
They're not the easiest people to work with, and I really don't think they know what the hell they're doing with the bridges, so.
Right. Well, thanks to Stu.
All the traffic lights and stuff.
Stu did all the work on that, so I can't take any credit, but we do have approved mass DOT, not only the original approvals, we got all the, because you renew once a year, and now with the Permit Extension Act, we have two years on top of that.
I like the fact that you're talking about modular construction. I think that's good for the neighborhood, that's good for the whole project. The other thing I had was, with the number of townhouses there and with the width of the road, there's really no place for visitors to visit people in the townhouses and park their vehicles.
Stu, there's, there's a garage?
Right.
Yep. And then they have the driveways, but we do have the seven overflow spaces over at the, at the clubhouse.
Right.
And secondarily, when do visitors come and party? Generally on the weekend. When is the medical offices closed? Generally on the weekend. So, we have another 157 spaces if they took a little walk, that they have parking in the same area.
That's, that's part of the issue, is will they take the walk? So.
Well, true, but there is, there is, if you, if you look up here, there's a sidewalk network right here?
Yep.
That comes down to the facility. So, if you parked over here, if it was associated with these townhomes, you have very close parking over here. So, true, we, we did reduce the width of the road, we, we just felt that it would, it would look better, it would slow down traffic.
Absolutely, it would slow down traffic. I'm just trying to think of the other townhouses, if they had a guest over, and now they're going to be parking in a narrow roadway, and that might be an issue, so. If there are some green spaces there that you could maybe put a couple of extra squats in?
Yeah, you, you do have some more space over here.
Yep. And then, on the right, on the easterly side, there's a couple of squats in there that you could probably figure. I would just see if you could figure out a couple of extra squats.
Potentially, and, you know, as long as this isn't, you know, significant, is this something that, if, if we wanted to put in a few more spaces, is it something that comes in with, to the planning board for a new plan application? Is it something, you know, tell me the process.
If you could do that, it would be just a modification to the, what, if we approve something tonight, it'd be just a modification.
Like, like a letter and send it to the plan?
Yeah, we, we could probably do it in-house, I would think. It would be just small enough.
They could, they could hatch it in for potential.
Right.
And then, just if they needed it, they can just put it in because it would already be placed on a plan.
So, you can make a condition that says, if there is a vote tonight that, that says, could you revise our requested site plan for potential auxiliary parking?
Yeah, if we could see it on a plan that was hatched for potential, you know.
I would just look at that, Greg, because some of those areas on the, I guess it would be the southeast side, they're pretty far away from the existing parking.
It's a, it's a good point.
So, just, and there is some green space there, hate to take away some of the green space, but.
You know, and, and maybe these auxiliary parkings, you know, is, you know, it doesn't necessarily need to be paved, maybe gravel or something, or, you know, like a, you know, light wash stone or something that blends in more landscape-wise than just batuminous concrete.
The only reason I brought it up is because the narrowing of the roadways, if somebody parks out in front of somebody's condo unit and goes in there, that's going to be a choke point in the roadways. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Good point.
And we've seen it in some of the other proposed condo units, townhouses, so just something to think.
Point taken.
Anybody else from the board? Okay.
I have one more question. You talked about maybe in the future doing it A and R and separating. So, would that, would there be, maintain the shared parking for the medical and the-
We'd have to do easements.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would the circulation remain the same? Would the pass-through road remain the same if it's separated?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think something like that can be, can be conditioned.
Yeah. Because I could see the condo association being developed for the townhouses and just being separated.
Yeah, that's something, you know, and to tell you the truth, you know, you know, the proponent right now intends to develop and potentially own or rent or, or a combination thereof, so he's going to want that, so.
Okay.
I don't think being, it being conditioned is necessarily hurtful to the proponent is probably a betterment.
Okay. All right, thank you. You can have a seat now, rest your back.
I'll, I'll have a stand, I'm going to have a stand.
Okay.
Just one more question. What's the price point of these? Do we know? No ballpark figures?
You can't, with the fluctuation in the market now, and you can't even start to gauge that. Okay, audience, anybody have a question? Judy, want to come on up to the lectern?
I'm not really texting anybody, I just have all my notes on my phone. When you're talking about that, splitting the A and R, could you explain what that is? Sorry, you have to come back, or somebody else could explain it.
You could stand there and use Corinne's mic.
Thank you. An A and R plan stands for Approval Not Required. It's, it's a matter, of course, when you have a, a large enough lot that meets all the requisite zoning requirements, that you come in and by right, you have the right to create a new property line. And with respect to this parcel, because of how large it is and the, and the frontage and how we meet all the zoning criteria, you do have the ability to make two separate lots. You're welcome.
I kind of knew the answer, but I was pretty sure everybody didn't. So. Where's the, I have a question. Is this the right one? All right, so, on here you have the road. Am I right side up?
Nope, you're right side up.
I'm right side up. So, there we go. So, here's the road up here. What would be the possibility if the road went through here, and this was more of a purposeful road, so that more people could access out this direction versus having to squirrel all around through here and then go through the, where people are pedestrians and parking and all of that? Food for thought.
I would, I would not want to see that, Judy, and the reason is because when you have through traffic cutting through a parking lot, and that's basically what they would be doing, that's more of a chance of a issue or an accident.
Not if it was identified as this is the pathway and had markings, and it was along the edge, there aren't pedestrians walking this direction.
Then that would probably require them to make a bigger parking lot, less green space, so that they could have through traffic.
Well, you would have through traffic associated with people using Huntersbrook Road, and we don't want to make this-
Right, like a cut through.
-a cut through for the general populace. What we're trying to do is just reduce the amount of people in the development, not to make that a true cut through, where we're cutting off the straightest point to A and B is a straight line, which would be there. And then you have people going through who are not respecting the development or not using the MOB. I, I think that that would bring on more of a safety concern, and I'd rather have-
Yes, but safety in here, not in here.
But, no, a safety concern in the parking lot, too. Because, because it meanders through, okay, you know, maybe some, you know, maybe 50% of the northerly people may use that egress point, where maybe the-
People might.
They, they might, but what-
Shortest distance.
But, but what we don't want to see is everyone, when they're on their ways and they're trying to battle their way, be cutting through a medical office building of people that have medical issues. I just think that it's a, it's a dire safety concern, myself.
Yeah, I can see that point. I don't know, food for thought, though. Thank you for entertaining my creative brain.
Welcome.
Sorry, I have to wake up my phone here. I know, so Huntersbrook Road was named after a stream that actually runs down Huntersbrook Road. So, I'm always seriously concerned about the stormwater runoff, and I know that that was addressed before. There, you know, the configuration is different, the, you know, the number of roofs and the, you know, the, the surfaces are more. I'd like to hear more about how that water's going to be mitigated and how it, whether it actually is going to be mitigated and go into the area that's considered- to be mitigated and go into the area that's considered the water, the protected water area. So.
I can answer the protected water.
Do you want a microphone?
I have a microphone.
Oh, I didn't even see it. I thought it was a zipper.
The protected watershed, with respect to North Sagamore Water District, this is not a protected watershed area where we're developing.
The area that's where all the woods are? Wetland, that's what I was trying to.
Oh, you're talking about the wetland. Actually, the way we've designed the stormwater in the original design, as well as the exist, the existing design, actually sheds the stormwater out and infiltrates on-site. It actually does not go into the BVW areas or, or, or the buffer zone. It's, so it's exactly the same as where it was. We do have, I think we designed to a very large storm using the Cornell method, and we've actually beefed up some of these stormwater ponds on there. So Stu, if you want to talk about, you know, a little bit about just how we went about the stormwater, you know?
Yeah. So on, on this.
You got to go to the mic when you're talking, though.
Stuart Clark with Green Seal. On this project, we've switched over to a different style of infiltration system. We're going to use our tank systems underneath some rain gardens. These are, they're like large mill crates. They're probably four by six, and they're, they're plastic, and you put them underground. They hold the water and infiltrate the water. So we have one here, one here, and one here. And that's where the water's going to come into these basins, is going to settle in the basins, and it's going to go through the media and into these subsurface stormwater chambers, which hold thousands of cubic feet of water, and then infiltrate into the, into the ground. The medical office building has one also in this area, but for, for the, for the people right along here, we've got one here, we've got actually a small one here, and then a larger one here. So we've got one, two, three of them. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, it also, it also, if, if they, if any of them are subsurface under pavement, you know, it just reduces the amount of impervious area. Some of these things can be H20, so you can, you can drive over them.
Yeah. It's all been designed in accordance with stormwater policy, where it says, I cannot let water go off the site. So that's why, you know, it's been designed that way, so we keep all the water on-site.
Thank you. That is improved, so I appreciate that. Because, you know, there are things that, there's been construction and things like that that have happened on Hunters Brook Road, and the sand is incredible that washes down that road and.
And like a new gas line.
Yeah. And the gas line, the gas line. It's just five, five feet in diameter. Okay, so in, with the additional building, is there, and this may be in the plans, and I'm sorry, I haven't looked at, like, you know, studied it in detail, but I know that in the previous conversations, you talked about the buffer along Hunters Brook Road because it's a residential area, and that's a lot that, and I see in the pictures it's there. What is the width of the, what's the requirement for the width of the buffer zone?
I think the vegetative, like, no touch is somewhere around 25 feet, and then it goes to some grass in the decks, and then it goes to the townhome itself.
So is the total 25 feet from?
No.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it from the, from the, we're doing a fence there. From the back of the fence to the street layout is something like, yes, yeah. Is, is something like 25 feet, where, you know, there's briars and poison ivy in there.
Lots of creepy stuff in there.
You know, I'm not going to say that we might not, you know, you know, brush cut some lower stuff just to give it a better appeal, but with respect to the tall stands of trees, you know, in that buffer zone, they should all stay. Same with, same with the easterly side of the site up by Patty's Way where those buffer zones are. We don't, you know, we, you see the trees on the rendering is basically the trees that we're trying to, trying to keep.
And will more trees be planted?
We do have landscaping plants, so you'd have to take a peek at those. We've.
There's an augmentation of that.
Go under the mic.
If you're going to comment again, you're going to have to.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
With the planting plan, there is an augmentation of the lower brush in that area along Hunters Brook, just to give a visual breakup. Because like he says, it's just kind of scrub, and so I think they were looking at some sort of mountain laurel or something like that they were going to plant in there.
Thank you.
That helps with the water runoff, too. One of the other issues that I've been very concerned about is that the width of Hunters Brook Road and the amount of traffic, including pedestrian, bicycle, multi-use. And I would, I request again for consideration for, because we have complete streets in the, in the town of Born, having, you know, widening the road slightly so that there is space for multi-use travel. Because I could tell you, you know, many of us who are here right now, we use that street quite regularly, and even just with one car coming down the road, we have to step way off the road, and that's hard to do on a bicycle. And there are a number of bicycle trips that go from Boston down through whatever, and, and go down Hunters Brook Road. That's a popular place to be going. So I would respectfully ask for something like that.
I, I can answer. With complete streets, obviously, we're not going to fund complete streets. We do have a full sidewalk network associated with the facility. If complete streets wanted to go for a widening, I can't see why the proponent, the proponent wouldn't allow for some sidewalk form of easement, you know, as long as he was indemnified. It would be much better for the community, and we would, we would be supportive of that.
So is that, does anyone here know is the complete streets requirement only a requirement through the town, or can it be a requirement that's part of a building project?
I believe it's through the town.
I'd like to know, for sure. I know I'm hogging the time, and there are other people.
I know, because the town looked at complete streets program for County Shore, some of the other roads, major roads on the south side, and that was all a town-proposed project. I don't think.
I believe I went to something with Corinne, actually, at Mass Maritime Academy, maybe a while ago, but to sit in on it and to see what it was about. But to tell you the truth, I haven't, I don't remember one thing they said, no.
Yeah. I mean, I've participated in the complete streets conversations also, and I think, I didn't recall that it was only, you know, the, the town that would put that, you know, request that money, or, you know, that you can require a developer to do something like that, you know, to make it, in fact, I know for a fact, where I work currently, there, the road, a road is being widened, and we're required to add a multi-use path along the road that's being wired, and it's at our expense. So that was built into the development requirement.
Yeah. I, I believe with Hunters Brook Road, though, you're going to have to go down to every property and get easements because.
Oh, no, I'm thinking on your side.
So it's a, it's a path that goes nowhere?
No, I mean, obviously, it could go through a couple others, but there's, what, 400? How, how many feet along that road? Yeah, yeah. So that's a good chunk of it.
We did do a sidewalk connection, not only there, but then handicapped accessible sidewalk network to connect to the other sidewalk networks that are up by the new Starbucks and everything like that, including the crosswalks and everything.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So if we're talking about that for our development, we are connecting to a wide road on Canal Street through the medical office building. So they do have the opportunity to access that way, which is a very wide road with white painted lines that a bicycle can.
Yes, but if you're going to the canal, you're not going to go uphill and then come back down. Just for the case of argument. And then, let me see, one of my other questions is 12% affordable units. That's great. Is that going to be built into the deed?
Yeah, there's, I'm sure there'll be conditions here. We have to meet with the housing authority, potentially pick units. It's also built into the DRI decision.
Okay.
So you can't get your, you can't get your certificate of compliance without complying.
Okay. And, and having it in the deed is part of the compliance?
Yeah, the new affordable housing is.
Okay. So I know that, I mean, I know that there were some.
You know more than me. Whatever we need to do associated with this, yes, fine. I know that it's part of the DRI decision, and I believe it was 12 and a half percent, right?
And I just know that there had been some units, houses, that were considered affordable, and it wasn't in their deed, and then those houses got sold, and it was all a big fat mess. So we didn't get to count them.
The proponent fully understands that those will be affordable, and I believe that.
There'll be a restriction.
That's Eliza's job, so Eliza can answer that if she needs to.
The commission will require a recorded restriction that runs with the title.
Okay, thank you. I know, because I, I know those things are changing, so just wanted to follow up with that. And by the way, I didn't say who I am. I'm Judy Frohman from Sagamore Beach.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Anybody else from the audience? Sir?
Good evening. Mike Metcalf. I live on Hunters Brook Road. Thank you for having me. Mr. Worson, my condolences on your back. I know we have family members that have gone through similar, so I can definitely empathize.
It's my third one. I'm getting used to it.
I am sorry. Let me start by saying, I've been against this project from the beginning. Those of you that have been here for a while, you probably have seen me get up and speak about this. Always said, too much on too little property. The property is going to be developed. At one point in time, somebody's going to do something with it. That's going to happen. That's a given. I'm not going to argue that. The way that we're moving, I got to say, much better than what you had originally proposed. If you guys had originally come out with something like this, I think we may have been a little bit closer. You're definitely getting more in line with the needs of the neighborhood. So thank you for that. My concern tonight is, as Mr. Worson said, hindsight's 20-20. When this started, this was 2018. We didn't have COVID. Didn't have a lot of things that were going on at that point in time. We didn't have the insight to know all the principles that were involved in this. And for those of you that, that are not aware, again, I'm not sure how many of you were here for a long period of time, but this project was basically started by Bob Gendron, and Bob was a member of the planning board. When he acquired the property, he retired from the planning board. Looking back historically, in January of 2018, Bob took a job working for a gentleman by the name of Ralph De La Torre. For those of you that don't know the name, Ralph De La Torre is, was the CEO of Stewart Healthcare. Stewart Healthcare that has bankrupted six hospitals in the state of Massachusetts. There are a lot of optics here, that this is still Creff, the company that now owns Green Seal and is Bob Gendron's company. Ralph De La Torre had a 40% interest in that property, in Creff. Just gave it up as of August of 2024 with the bankruptcy of Stewart Healthcare. My main concern here is the optics involved of someone that was a very large player in Stewart Healthcare and the downfall of Stewart Healthcare, opening a medical building in the town of Born. I know we're here tonight to talk about the plans and the progress and everything else, and I know that we also, in the town, we're very siloed as far as what we can approve and not approve. My concern here is, we're going to go through and say, yeah, go ahead and do it. Who's going to be maintaining this building? Is it going to be similar to what Stewart did, where they sold the property to Medical Properties Trust and then charged them back an exorbitant amount of rent, and that's why those companies went bankrupt? Five years from now, 10 years from now, is this property going to be bankrupt as well? You know, the Boston Globe did a report, there were at least 15 deaths associated with the lack of care from Stewart Healthcare as to what happened. Bob Gendron, like it or not, had a very active part in that. And he is still, Stewart Healthcare and Creff shared office space in Dallas, Texas. Same office. In 2023, between 2023, May of 2023 and May of 2024, Ralph De La Torre moved $37 million from Stewart Healthcare into Creff as far as management fees, while Ralph owned 40% of the company, but basically paying himself.
You're getting, you're getting a little bit off track from this project.
My point, my point is.
There needs to be some corrections, though, because some of that is untrue and unfounded. I'll tell you right now, I was in bought by Creff. I own the company, my wife and I. It was not purchased by Creff. Creff was a sister company, okay? Never owned by Creff, ever. I have all the documentation. I'm not going to share it with you, but that's a 100% fact.
Really? Because I happen to have a.
Yeah, it's unfounded. Doesn't matter.
I happen to have the documentation from Creff that they actually released, that they bought Green Seal Environmental.
That, that press release was a marketing thing. They did not buy Green Seal Environmental. There was a holding company that bought Green Seal Environmental, under which Creff was one of them, but that is not true. That was a marketing piece because we played a piece with respect to compliance and engineering. So it's a marketing piece.
This is a quote from you in here, and if you would like, I would.
That's fine.
Submit this and.
And I didn't write that either. But I will tell you, I have all the documentation. It was not purchased by Creff.
If you want to submit that, you can submit it, and we'll put it in the record.
Absolutely. My main point I want to make, and obviously, you know, we're getting into a, a match here back and forth, is that my concern is the optics on the town of Born. Is that we're going to go ahead and say, yep, let them build. And something's going to happen, and someone's going to come back and say, gee, Born, how stupid were you? Stewart Healthcare was kicked out of the entire state, and now we're letting people affiliated with it. And I'm sorry, Greg, but you can't tell me that Bob had nothing to do with Stewart Healthcare.
There's two things. I didn't say they didn't have anything. It was, it was, it was, this has nothing to do with this site at all. But first of all, they were in the same building, because I visited Dallas. They weren't on the same floor, okay? They didn't share an office.
I didn't say they were on the same floor. I said.
They shared the same building.
They shared an office location.
Ralph De La Torre didn't own, so he rented a floor, they rented a floor.
Again, we're getting off, getting off track.
It has nothing, it has nothing to do with the site.
What pertains to this project. And I understand your points.
That, that is my point. So, and at some point in time, the press is going to get wind of this, that this is going on, one way or another. I'm just saying, do we want the optics in the town of Born? That's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience have anything?
Hi, my name's Andy Cunningham. I live at 30 Hunters Brook Road, right across the street from the proposed exit entrance into the residential portion of the project. Luckily, I'm one of the newer guys in town, so I don't have the longstanding history of what has gone on in this town in relation to everybody involved with this project. What I do have is a few concerns. I'm going to apologize if I repeat some of the same concerns that have already been brought up, but I'd like to emphasize a few of those and just talk about them a little bit more. One of the things that was brought up, and I, sorry, my notes are not organized. I really had a couple of minutes to do this just before I got out of work and came here. One concern that you have already brought up before is the lack of guest parking for the 50 residential units. Again, if you've got one or two people in each of those units, they have one or two cars. If they are elderly people, 55 and over, they likely have kids and grandkids who are going to want to come visit. You've got seven spaces for 50 houses to come visit. It's not much. And again, trying to tell somebody they got to go park over in the medical office building and walk over, I don't think is really the acceptable answer.
We did bring that up, and I think the proponent will look at some of those areas and see if they can't create some.
And I agree. If you have anybody park on the single road, that's a 22-foot road, you're blocking that road. If you, I also would like to point out the 14-foot narrowing bottleneck of the access road that you're providing for the exit of the residential pop owners out onto Canal Road. It's pretty darn skinny. It's almost like you're saying, don't go this way.
No, we don't.
And again, I'm going to repeat what was once said already. If you live over here, you're, you're never going out this way, because it's a long snaking to get over to here before you even start to exit. So I don't know if this, it seems to be a foregone conclusion that there has to be an entrance and exit onto Hunters Brook Road. I've never seen anybody ever talk about having a second bridge out here on Canal Road. Canal Street? Which one is it? Street?
Road.
I don't know. Now, granted, building this bridge is probably pretty darn expensive.
About a million dollars.
And to double that, so you could have an entrance and exit for fire protection, for ambulances, for everything that this provides as a second entrance, realizes a lot of money. But I've never heard anybody even consider. One other thing I'd like clarification on, and I think this would be addressed to you. You have a stormwater retainer basin in this apartment area.
That's correct.
It looks on this page, there's a line going out onto Hunters Brook Road. Is that from a storm drain on Hunters Brook Road to feed stormwater into that? It looks on this page, there's a line going out onto Hunters Brook Road. Is that from a storm drain on Hunters Brook Road to feed stormwater into that basin or vice versa?
Vice versa. That's overflow during-
Overflow out onto Hunters Brook Road.
Goes into the drainage system on Hunters Brook Road during the 100-year storm.
Okay, as it, as you all may be well aware of, Hunters Brook Road cannot handle regular rainfall right now.
It's going into the drainage system. There's a 30-inch drainage pipe in Hunters Brook Road goes down to the canal.
I believe you. But right now, every time it rains, Hunters Brook Road turns into Hunters Brook Stream. My driveway washes away every rainstorm, and I try to bring material back to put it back into where there is no enough handling capacity of that stormwater as we speak. And you're talking about maybe having this fill up and overflow down onto Hunters Brook Road to add even more?
Sir, you're missing the point. There's a pipe that runs down Hunters Brook Road to the canal, a 30-inch pipe.
Existing.
Tie into that pipe. So it's not going to go into onto the surface of Hunters Brook Road.
So you're going to, you're going to add more stormwater flow into the existing pipe that already goes down to the canal. For some reason, and I'm not doubting that that 30-inch pipe exists, but the rainfall on Hunters Brook Road is not handled already. And you're adding more stormwater flow into that same stormwater convenience capacity.
Only during the 100-year storm.
During any rainstorm.
Okay, again-
Sorry.
Having worked in the town for a number of years, I know what you're talking about. There's a difference between the underground drainage pipe and what that can absorb and what the catch basins are currently on Hunters Brook Road. That's a town issue. And with the 18-inch gas line that's running underneath that whole road, that might be a reach to be able to fix that drainage. So the drainage that's there is probably not adequate for the road, but the underground pipe-
It is not.
Can certainly accept more water.
Okay, I guess I'm just bringing up a subject that-
No, I-
Is pretty common, known, commonly known already.
I know what you're talking about.
And I just don't want it to be-
Right.
Increased to a different magnitude.
I think we've seen this in so many different parts of town that when the roads were actually constructed and drainage systems were designed at the particular time, that through the years design changes have have come up, and they've actually required more catch basins than what was designed years and years ago.
Like Lake Howard, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Lake Howard. We've had a couple of the other ones. So, you know, that's, that's a different situation that the town has to deal with.
We're in a town of Bourne meeting and hearing, so-
Mr. Chairman, I understand.
It's all kind of related.
Mr. DuSet?
Yeah, in in the presentation earlier, it was stated with the project, storm, the law is they've got to capture all the stormwater.
Hold it for a certain number of-
On site.
Holding capacity and then releasing.
I said that the project had to meet stormwater policy. That means I have to hold all the stormwater from the 2, 10, 25-year storm. I have to analyze downstream effects during the 50- and 100-year storm. Correct.
And do we overflow during the 50?
We do not overflow during the 50. Only during the 100-year storm, we get like one cubic foot or second coming out of there. It's very minimal. Thank you. Do you want to respond with respect to traffic flow? I I know that this isn't an egress point for everybody, and I don't expect everybody to use this. We did this as a mitigative measure, not a sheer ingress and egress. If anyone chooses to use Hunters Brook Road, the studies show that with stop control sign, not a stop, stop control like stop signs, that there are no impacts to Hunters Brook Road with respect to traffic. The only impact is to our development if they have to stop and wait for a car. I do like the the pinch point. It's it's saying that don't go in there with the stop signs and the one-way roads. If it was wider, I think that people would say, oh, it's wide enough. We can sneak through. And that's why we-
I don't disagree. I agree with-
That's why we created that pinch point.
As long as you have signage correctly-
We do, we do.
Honest people will comply with honest requests.
Correct.
It doesn't take away that you're now having the potential of 100 cars living in these 50 units.
Correct.
It's only 32 units there.
It's 32 units.
50 bedrooms.
50 bedrooms.
Correct.
I don't know how many cars that's going to be, though. Neither do you.
Yeah, we we cannot, we-
May I continue?
Oh, yes, yes.
Couple other things. The, what I believe to be is a mailbox area. I think this should be moved up to the clubhouse to avoid, again, another choke point of people stopping to get mail or anything else like that.
Good point.
Right at the intersection. The minimum setbacks on the buffer, 25 feet, is probably not bad. I wouldn't mind seeing it. Keep more of the existing trees, not only for a a buffer at Hunters Brook Road, but also maybe a little bit of a natural habitat corridor for squirrels and everybody else that used to live in this forested area. Continuing. The amount of pedestrian traffic on Hunters Brook Road, I think, has not been emphasized anywhere near the potential that it really should be in everyone's mind yet. Because I watch it daily. It is kids walking, bicycling. It is mothers with baby carriages. It is kids getting off the school bus that have to walk down the street because the school bus doesn't take them all the way. It is everybody walking, bicycling, every other kind of means to get down to the canal. It is the Pan Mass Challenge. It is day and night. It is during light. It is in the dark. This road is 18 feet wide at my house. There is no sidewalk. When it's raining, you want to walk on the middle of the street because you're walking through a stream if it's raining. So the suggestion or consideration to be had about putting some sidewalk in, maybe not sidewalk all the way up Hunters Brook Road, but at least from this entrance exit down to the canal, which is what all these people are going to want to do because they're not going to walk up the hill through this parking lot and then down the hill this way. If you want to try and improve safety traffic, pedestrian car in every other way, you need a sidewalk down here. I don't care who pays for it, but somebody needs to put a sidewalk down there. It really should go all the way up the road, but I won't even ask for that. Again, I don't know if 22 feet is a typical width of a two-way traffic road within a residential townhouse condominium area. I'm asking if that's a typical width. And then I, I guess I'm okay with the bottleneck of the 14 here to serve as a purpose of the one-way traffic. But I just question if this, the 22-foot width is typical. The mailboxes, I think, is a bad idea for the location. And I'll, I'll finish with my last point of the, you talked about phases of construction. Correct me if I heard it wrong. You're going to build a bridge and have all construction, construction traffic in phases to build the residential, coming and entering and exiting via this bridge that gets built first, not this entrance?
You're going to bring, you want me to respond?
Because, and I'll say one last thing, then please, yes. When this trail went in, a flatbed parked in front of my house. That flatbed took up more than half the road. A car could barely get out of and around them just to bring that first small piece of equipment in for this project. There is going to be a lot more equipment coming in to build this entire project in traffic with all construction of every type. I'd like to see all of that come in through this, which means you build this bridge first. And I thought I heard that was the desired phase earlier in your conversation, but please confirm that.
Am I just confirming that question? You you made a lot of points. You want me to answer this phasing?
Yeah, I'd like to talk-
Okay.
Please talk about the construction phase.
Phasing, yeah. We will have to drop equipment there. We need to do a fair amount of clearing, a fair amount of grading to even be able to do the bridge. This is a multi-crane effort from both sides-
Yep.
To to put that bridge in. So yes, just like the old, the old conditions. But once we get that bridge in, that will be the main course. Before you started pouring foundations or 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 doing anything associated with the building and the construction, yes, but as you've been, have you been up it, up that road?
I have, yeah.
Okay. It's hilly. It's a big, it's a big, it's a big earth-moving effort to to make it some semblance of creating the laydown areas for what you need to do for all the pieces and everything. So we are going to be initially taking equipment up that road until the bridge gets in. That is correct. And then the intention is to probably do some some settling ponds when we grip, scrub, strip and grub, screen the loam, probably lay down, lay down the loam in in the northerly portion, put down some annual rye and things like that as we're going to town. We're going to have a binder course for our laydown area. And then, and then we'd come in and do the construction. But yes, all the building trades, getting all the modular pieces in there, all the paving, piping associated with the waterline looping, everything like that, we are planning it, that is coming over the bridge. But we have to get heavy equipment into the site, and that would initially come in through Hunters Brook Road.
Which is my concern. So any mobilization of all of that construction activity that has to occur on Hunters Brook Road.
Yeah, you're, again, you're, you're kind of soft-spoken, so again, if you want to stand up, thank you.
Sorry. So again, any construction mobilization, demobilization, offloading, loading, that has to occur on Hunters Brook Road literally will likely for the most part block Hunters Brook Road because of its narrow nature we're starting with. It is only 18-foot wide right now. And I've seen it happen with the first piece of equipment that ever went onto this site.
Yep, that was Pinnacle who's from Bourne and Sagamore and Gavoni when they did that clearing, yeah.
And one of them literally apologized to to block me in my driveway that day.
And I can understand what you're saying, but if you don't want to interrupt the existing vegetation on Hunters Brook so that you have a natural buffer, you want to leave that alone. Unfortunately, during construction, you're going to have that. And we've seen that in almost every project that we've approved is you're going to have a certain period of time when they first start out that, yeah, there's going to be interruptions to traffic flow. And that's just the nature of the beast.
So I need, I, I feel like we're talking around this a little bit. The bridge is where the construction materials and all the equipment will go in. However, when will the bridge be built and completed and ready to do that? Do we have a sense? Like after a period of time?
We'd probably get the tree clearing equipment in there, and we have to strip and grub and and push some soils, so. I don't know. But the equipment will remain on site. They're not taking it out daily, you know. Once it's, once it's mobilized, it's mobilized. You know, we probably, they grub, screen, strip, move soils. And then you probably have your pad course so that you can actually come in from both sides to pour your footings and your foundations so that you can do your clasp band areas. I'm not sure the exact timing, but could it be 16 to 90 days that equipment might be on the internal part of the site? Maybe. And that's just-
So it wouldn't necessarily be two years or something like that, you know, like getting to-
No, 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 no.
The way the conversation could be interpreted is that the the clearing and the site planning and all of that will happen from Hunters Brook Road. Once that's done, then the bridge will be completed.
Correct.
So the site clearing is, I guess that's part of what my question is too, is how long would you expect that size area needing to be under construction from Hunters Brook Road? It is, I mean, Andy's absolutely right. It's, it's-
I'm not a general contractor. I don't run a D8. I don't run it, you know. That's going to be up to the, you know, it's got to go out to bid. There has to be bid specs that are done. They have to, they have to give times and phases. I will tell you that we are looking at some alternative access. I'm not going to say how, when, who, or even if we can do it. If we can do it, we'll do it.
That would be encouraging because that 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 pinch point on Hunters Brook Road, it really is, it's traveled a lot.
Yeah, we just don't want to drop further down and drive a D8 down Hunters Brook Road, you know, just because they're cleated and damaged and everything like that.
They're doing that too, yeah. My last question was, is there going to be any conditions, limitations on the construction activity, days of the week, time of the day?
There was in the old permit with respect to hours of construction, and I'm sure-
All what they were?
And I believe that there would be limitations associated with the new one. Maybe the town planner and-
We didn't change that. I think the hours are pretty much the same, will be the same as what we had already agreed on, which I believe was-
Seven to six.
Seven to six, right.
Monday through Friday only?
Can't say that.
I can.
The current decision says Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, right. So Sunday would be-
Seven to six.
No, seven to six. Nothing on Sunday.
Hi, Al Ritchie from Patty's Way. Are, so you're going to be running a screening plant on the property and screen all the dirt and loom?
Yeah, we want to, we want, we want to reuse the loam on site for for putting, putting it back in place, temporary vegetation and things like that.
So that machine's going to be going all hours of the day, every day-
I don't know how many-
Screen.
Trommel screen, and I mean, we can, we can try to seed it further away from Patty's Way, more towards the west, up where the, up where the medical office building would be. Like to to the west of that, you know. It's going to be a good laydown area because what we want to do is put in an area where we're not going to have the binder course and put in the area where we're not going to start the foundations down for the, for the homes to the south. So I think we can find in a minimal distance and we can meet on site and even talk about it, about where where we would screen. But, you know, those screening plants can generally screen hundreds and hundreds of cubic yards a day. You know, the, the, the organic level of that soil is probably only five inches. So if you, you took six acres and you can figure out the cubic feet, the cubic yardage, I don't think it's going to, you know, so the stumps will be taken out by dump truck.
And they'll all be running out on Hunters Brook?
No, no, I don't, I, you know, I don't, I believe that they would, my guess is that they would lay down the stumps. And and then they got to shake off the stumps and everything like that, and then they they would be hauled out, but we-
So all the hauling out, is that going to be done on the bridge? Or that's going to be done, that's all going to be done on the bridge? Because everybody walks down the road. Everybody's got their dogs. Everybody's walking 24/7 on that road. When you have just a car go by, it's, I mean, you really have to move over and then next to, I don't know your name. What is it? Andy. So Andy's house, two houses over, they're clearing some trees, and there's a tree truck out there, and the whole road's blocked off. So having the equipment on it and all that, just that extra traffic from them pulling out, because there's no way, there's no way these people are going to go up here with your one-ways and all that. You, you, we can't even get the people to go into McDonald's. They're all going in the one-way all day long, accidents, everything. So you mean to tell me these people are going to listen to that? I mean, I know this is going to happen. I'm not trying to be a Karen in the group. But this exit on on Hunters Brook is going to be detrimental to the neighborhood with the size of the road. And this, I think this, there's just got to be some other option for it because it's just going to impede everybody. The, the whole part of Sagamore Beach is going to be affected by that. It's bad enough that when we have 4th of July traffic and everything, everybody gets off the highway and comes through the back roads and blocks that road all the way up and around to the lights where we can't even function in the neighborhood. We literally can't function on all the holiday weekends. We are screwed. So now we're going to have 32 townhomes in there, and we're screwed. We're done.
You'd be happy to use that cut through, though, when it's already blocked.
I would never use that cut-through. I can't see myself going through that and using it. I just can't. And I can't see other people doing it.
No, I'm saying if there was a traffic jam all the way down Hunter's Brook Road.
I just, it's impassable in the summer.
Okay. Read you some of the conditions that we had originally and we will incorporate those into this, which is exterior site work and building construction shall be performed between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. No construction equipment shall be operated outside a building on holidays or Sundays. The roadway service to the residential units shall be named and approved by the Board of Selectmen. That will be later on. Parking on Hunter's Brook Road and Patty's Way construction site is prohibited following the initial site clearing and the bridge construction. So, once that bridge is constructed, everything will be going across that bridge into this site.
Right, but we're still going to get, we're still, there's no way these people are going to go up that way and go out. It's just going to bring up the traffic on Hunter's Brook Road. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm not going to go back and forth. You obviously, it's going through and that's, it is what it is. But just, I'm just saying that exit out of there, you know, for an emergency exit, that's fine, but for, you know, I just feel this should be some other way to come up and go out, another entrance through these trees, exit to go into this road. I just, that going out on Hunter's Brook with it not being so wide is just going to be detrimental to the whole neighborhood.
Understood.
And then it's all going to be a traffic jam when summer hits.
Understood. And I also know that people will always find the easiest and shortest way to get out of any project, so they'll figure it out.
Well, yeah, not in Sagamore. I just wanted to do a follow-up like Judy did a minute ago. Any of you are welcome to come park in front of my house, I'm at 48 Hunter's Brook, in a rainstorm or any time during the day during the summer, walk down the road. Please, take a walk down the road, see what we're talking about.
That's a town issue.
But I'm just saying...
It doesn't have to be a town.
It doesn't, exactly. I'm just saying, we're voicing these concerns. If you, just come take a look, you will see exactly what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy's...
Let me get one.
Tara Anderson.
You guys are talking about, you're concerned about, you know, parking for all of these townhouses. Well, why don't we don't put as many townhouses? You've got this little section here, 32, 55-plus age, make that the, a little parking area so people, all those other units right there have a parking space. You don't have to have 32 townhouses. You can have 25.
Right.
And then you have all the parking that you want.
Thank you. Judy, you had something else?
Yes, I do.
Of course.
I forgot to mention it earlier. So, there is a major gas line that serves Cape Cod that goes down Hunter's Brook Road and I don't know what type of testing and, you know, stress testing has been involved with that in terms of large vehicles or frequency of vehicles. But I really don't feel like having the whole neighborhood go kaboom.
No. I think when they constructed that gas line, I worked down there at the time and it's buried deep enough so that it could handle any major vehicles that are allowed on the road anywhere.
Yeah.
So, it's not going to affect that, yeah.
My name is Scott Furman and I live on 10 Lucialane, which is right near that Hunter's Brook Road. One question real quick. You said cars exiting here won't be allowed to go left, they can only go right, is that what you said?
There's an island that points them to the right with an angle. They won't be parallel to the road, they would be coming out at a 45. I mean, we can sign it that says no left turn, which is fine if that's a condition.
If you live in that area and go all the way up to the lights here and whatever, people don't follow these signs. You can put all the lights and signs you want, but my choice is if I want to get down to this parking area down here, screw you, I'm taking a left. You're not going to stop me from doing it and that's going to be a problem because that's what people are going to do. They're not going to come all the way down in here and try to come up that way, they're going to come out here and they're going to take a left whether it's going around your island or not. And that's going to be a problem. There's going to be accidents. That parking area that's at the bottom of this road where the canal is during the summertime, well, not even the summertime, in the spring, as soon as the fish start coming in, is packed. And when it becomes overly packed, they start parking, you can't see it here because of your map, but they start parking across the road all along there. My guess is the people can't find it. I know you've talked about putting, building some additional parking spaces, taking out the tennis court, is that what that is, or pickleball? Oh, no, that's your wastewater plant.
Wastewater.
That will come later. Anyway, people that are having parties and wherever, they're going to be sending their cars to park down there. It's going to be a nightmare. Gridlock. GPS does it, sends, it fills them up Route 3, coming down from Route 3. When that doesn't work, they send them down State Road. When that doesn't work, they send them down Old Plymouth Road and it becomes total gridlock, total gridlock. And when they can't do that, they come down Hunter's Brook Road and that becomes gridlock. And then you add in Pan-Mass bicycle riders and runners and whatever, and this road is a highway. This isn't Hunter's Brook Road anymore. It's a highway.
Mr. Chairman?
And it's not one or two days a year.
Mr. Disat?
It's twice Pan-Mass has been mentioned. Pan-Mass doesn't go anywhere near your property.
Okay, I don't know what's bicycle...
That's bicycle.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
No, no, no slice Pan-Mass.
Thank you.
You know, just meant to tell you that it's bicycle road races, it's running road races, it's non, during the summer, it's non-stop and that's part of it.
Chairman? That's the Board of Selectmen would give them permission.
Isn't it the police chief and the Board of Selectmen? Isn't that the police chief and the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen grants them the right to use that for best buddies.
Well, I'm not saying they shouldn't grant it. I'm just, I just want you to know that that's what we deal with as well, that, you know, not only, you know, can't we necessarily drive through those areas, but, you know, those things as well.
And you got a bridge.
And then you're adding this now in there as well. So, you know, nice project considering where it started from, way, way back when, when the original purchaser of the property went to the original owners and said, quote, "Develop the land in Sagamore Beach to build three to four houses for family." That was the original plan when they went to purchase the property. We want to build three to four family homes.
But that's not the plan we're talking about.
No, we know where the plan's gone. We know where the plan's gone in all these years. It went from, you know, assisted living or, you know, blah, blah, and a medical building and all, you know, a few townhouses. Now, we're up to, you know, we took out the cash cow, sorry about losing the cash cow there, but, you know, now we're going to replace it with all these townhouses. So, I don't know. It's going to get built, something's going to get built. Let's take out some of this, let's take all this out right here. Let's give us back that area. Any consideration to what's happening, what's going to happen to all the wildlife that's in here that's going to be displaced, the deer, the foxes, all the wildlife that's in there? Any consideration to that or is that just collateral damage with the project? Does that become collateral damage? Where do they go?
Yeah, I don't think the site is big enough that it would require an environmental impact.
We did a wildlife habitat study here and it's in the record.
Okay.
And it's what?
It's in the record.
It's in the record.
Well, so, I don't know, can you answer that question? No, I mean, what happens to all that? What happens to all the deer that come from here into my yard?
Be displaced like everybody else.
And what's that? I'm sorry?
They'll be displaced just like everything else did on Cape Cod.
And where are we displacing them to in this situation? Where are they, we have, you're going to push them across the canal?
I don't know.
Where are we sending them to? Out on the beach?
Okay.
We've become, you know, and one of the former members of this board even said, we were no longer the village of Sagamore Beach. We're now a suburb of Boston and we're making it more and more of a suburb every day. We've already built the new apartments behind the fire station. We've already built, building a whole bunch more stuff up off of, between State Road and Old Plymouth Road in that area. And now we're going to add all this as well. So, we're no longer becoming the village of Sagamore Beach, we've just become a suburb of Boston and, you know, the village, not just those of us on Hunter's Brook Road or Lucialane or whatever, the whole village is paying the price for this boondoggle and that's what it is. One boondoggle, has been from the beginning. They got their first permit, a little underhanded as far as I'm concerned, didn't do anything in two years, came back, asked again, two more years, didn't do anything, now they're coming back again, now they, you know, each time, changing it around a little bit, trying to get your approval. We're paying the price. This board has the right to stop it.
Okay. Anybody else? Greg, do you have anything you want?
Just one more. I think I briefly heard a requirement of some waterwork upgrades. Is that a changing, increasing the size of water infrastructure on Hunter's Brook Road?
That's your Andy, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there is asbestos cement pipe that runs down Hunter's Brook from, there's a road right, not a little path, Patty's Way. So, we're going to replace that with ductile iron pipe all the way down, all the way up and then we're going to loop it through our development also and tie it back in there.
What is the size of the AC main right now?
It's a, I think it's an eight-inch. I think we've got to put a 12-inch, but, no, we've got to put eight-inch.
There's six-inch there and I think we're going to...
Oh, yeah, six-inch, we're going eight-inch, that's correct.
It is. It's on the plans though, Sue, there is a waterline plan.
Whereabouts in the road is it?
On Hunter's Brook?
No, gas is kind of right in the middle.
Yeah, I met with the gas company. We're, it's right in the shoulder here, the water, then it crosses over at one spot.
Which gas line? There's two gas lines. Which one is it?
I just met with the gas company, oh, what we were trying to do, replace water mains.
There's a small residential gas line there and then there's the new 18-inch line that feeds over to the canal plant, which goes underneath the canal. So, there's two gas lines there. But if there are any fire hydrants along Hunter's Brook Road, that's basically where your waterline is.
Yeah, typically on the same side.
Particularly on the same side.
It's a couple of feet off of the water main.
So, if there is a requirement to replace that AC water main and increase it to 10 or 12-inch or whatever the size is proposed?
We've done that.
Can I ask what the phase of that portion of the project is to occur?
Well, first of all, the bridge needs to be up because it's connected to the bridge.
So, it's after the bridge?
Yes, absolutely.
After all of the other on-site work?
Well, you need to do your, big mains are part of your trenching process and your looping, so...
But if that includes ripping apart half of Hunter's Brook Road to...
There's going to be some disruption when they replace the waterline, obviously.
There's a huge disruption to Hunter's Brook Road to replace a eight-inch main in the golden side of that road.
Yeah, that was a requirement, just so you know, that was a requirement not by us. We didn't want to replace it. The North Sagamore Water District wanted us to interconnect, especially if you saw the waterline approvals associated with Plymouth Road with those.
I'm sure they're more than happy to get the increase of this project.
Yeah, so, yeah, this was true.
But I'm not arguing the requirement of it.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to reiterate the fact that there is additional construction to occur because of this project on Hunter's Brook Road, which is now going to rip up the entire half of Hunter's Brook Road to replace that water main. And that doesn't happen overnight.
Well, there's another thing to think about too is, do you want to leave the asbestos-lined water pipe in there?
That's a long-winded question and not my, not my decision, so...
My decision either, but it sounds like the North Sagamore Water District, whenever they get a chance, they will actually ask them to upgrade the system in the area, which is a benefit to everybody.
Are you required to do that water main work at your cost for the North Sagamore District?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I'm not surprised. I'm just wanting to reiterate the fact that that is more additional construction, major additional construction and impact on to Hunter's Brook Road.
Yeah.
One more time.
Well, we propose...
And it's not just for a couple of days.
Correct, yeah. We propose that we just went from driveway to driveway and connected to the waterline, but we have agreed to mitigate the other lines by going further up the street than necessarily where you need the connection.
That hasn't changed, that's right.
Yeah, the original order of conditions is still valid from when we got it approved back in...
So, again, when you're doing construction and you're working in a road, there's your chance to improve that road in every means and necessary...
Like a mix of...
Like sidewalks all the way up.
Sidewalks.
Not just the water main and leave the road at 18-feet wide and add a whole lot more traffic, which is truly a safety concern that I don't think is really being addressed. So, I don't know, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Greg?
No.
Liza?
No, sir.
Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Doc?
Just a question about one of our recommended conditions, a question about, let's call it phasing within phasing. Recommended condition number seven, 100-foot vegetated buffer from Hunter's Brook Road layout line shall be maintained throughout the project with the exception of the residential roadway. Residential units closer to Hunter Burke, which require clearing within the 100 buffer, will be constructed last. Can we just talk about, I understand the sort of overall phasing where residences will go in before the medical center. Is there, is it possible to phase within that first phase so that we maintain 100-foot buffer as long as we can? I understand the ideal construction operation, clear it all, screen it all.
The answer is if you went there, it goes up a huge hill and down, down a hill, we need to do all that, or to balance the site a relative...
Don't run.
The site is fairly balanced, down to maybe a couple thousand cubic yards of material the way that we plan on doing it, but we do have to clear the site to do it. If you went up that temporary road on Hunter's Brook Road, it goes up a large hill, then it goes down a big hill, probably 75, 80 feet in. So, in order to balance the site, to get it right, we need to take down those hills. So, that's why we looked at modular construction and lay-down areas to the north and so the time associated with it, if we were going to do those 15 townhomes, we can probably do it quicker even though there's 32 of them on the way that we plan to do it. But to balance the site, Sue's worked pretty close on the grading plant. It was, I know it was under 5,000 cubic yards.
You need all the material.
We need all the material, yeah. We might have to import some. So, I mean, there's, you're moving tens of thousands of cubic yards of material to make that site set up for the way that we want it on there. And it's great soil, it's very, very sandy, it's easy to move. I mean, once you get through the, once you get through the loam layer, it's basically very, very coarse gravelly sand, it'll move good, just...
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand it, we looked at it, but we just felt that that was the best way to do it is to actually, you know, stage up top, screen up top, push the loam up top. So, once, you know, once we do our clearing there and we're pushing this way, we'll start there, but we're moving, we're moving to the north towards the Sorrenti property. Everything's going that way.
Just an observation and question about sidewalks. I know that's been discussed, but I don't see any internal sidewalks in the residential area. I'm not opposed of a sidewalk on Hunter's Brook from your driveway out. I think, working with the town, we've gotten a lot of requests for sidewalk networking and if we have the opportunity to do that, I think we need to look at that. We're, you know, we're trying to push for shared roads with bikes and walking and I think if we have an opportunity to look at it and it's possible to do it, I think that's something that we should do. That is a high pedestrian area because of the canal. People are going to want to live there because they're going to want to be able to go to the canal to walk on the canal, but we should get them to that canal safely. So, I think I'd like to see a little bit more about that and more consideration on that. The other thing, I think Doc talked about the phasing within the phasing. I think we need to look at that a little bit clearer, exactly how that's going to be phased. We talked about it early on when we first looked at this project and we talked about the 100-foot buffer. the 100-foot buffer, now that seems that that 100-foot buffer is gonna go away because you need to move the soil, I think we need to consider that, maybe reduce it to 50, whatever. I think we need to look at that, the impacts to the neighborhood. All of Cape Cod, all of Bourne have been impacted by the building. I've lived on Cape Cod all my life, I remember when we had nothing but trees, that, that doesn't happen anymore. But, if we can mitigate, we should mitigate as much as we can. I, um...
Yeah, the reason...
I'm very sensitive to development, and I think that, you know, pretty soon, we're gonna put a close sign on the bridges. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. But, I think we should try to mitigate as much as possible. I understand the animals are gonna be displaced, that's a fact of life is what's gonna happen. I remember deer used to be in my yard, I haven't seen a deer in a year in my yard. So, you know, that's gonna happen, but I think whatever we can do as a planning board, we should try to do that. I don't think we should rush to judgment, I think we should look at it, we should think about it, do the best that we can for the, for the neighborhood. I mean, I live on Adam Street, I can't get out of my house on the weekend, so I know what it's like. I know what it's like, and, you know, we, let's try just, you know, to look at that. You know, if I could walk to Market Basket, it'd be great, but I'm not gonna get killed on the highway trying to get to Market Basket. It'd be nice if there was a sidewalk network there, so, I'm just, you know, that's me personally talking about that, and if we can consider it, if we try, and it doesn't work out, doesn't work out, but I think we should try to do the best we can as far as pedestrian walkways go.
So, can I jump in with a question on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I have a follow-up question. So, and I understand, and I agree, and if I lived on Hunter's Brook Road, I would be very frustrated as well, and I understand that, and I think sidewalks are great. But, where does the responsibility lie? Is it with the developer? Do we ask them to put sidewalks in, or is it the town's responsibility? So, where, where do we fall? Because, I mean, just sitting here, I'm thinking, they're building a development, so now we're asking them to put in this extra cost, which is really, in my mind, a town cost, but I'm not sure. So, what have we done in the past and...
I mean, if you look at Cape Cod Commission projects in the past, mitigation has always been part of those projects.
Okay.
And how far they should go, depending on what the, the cost is. I don't know what they are. I'd really like to see the Cape Cod Commission decision, to see what they did. If you look on here, they show some of the mitigation that they have to do around there. I'm not saying do it, I say let's look at it.
Okay.
You know, and to see what it is, and if it's doable, just do it, if not, because I remember when I worked with the town, so many calls, "We want sidewalks in our neighborhood, we want sidewalks," you know? "We can't put them down Townley Road," you know how much takings that would be? But, it's a consideration. I think if we have an opportunity to consider it, let's consider it. If it works out, it works out, if it doesn't, it doesn't, at least we tried.
I agree, okay.
Mr. Chair, just one comment on Corinne's comment.
Yep.
And the idea of mitigation is, is a valid one, and maybe there is a digestible mitigation, that is, the distance from the residential access drive to a safe location accessing the canal. I'm fuzzy on the distance, 400, 500 feet?
It's a lot.
More?
Yeah. And you have to remember, we, we've committed to a lot of mit... We've committed to a fair amount of mitigation, it's, it's in the order of a few million dollars. One was do not disturb the wetlands by the bridge, which was a Cape Cod Commission requirement. The traffic mitigation alone is well over $600,000. The mitigation to help the town, North Sagamore Water District loop, loop the water is probably a $700,000 or $800,000 mitigation effort. I mean, this, this, this development is already put forth, if you add those three together, pretty close to three, 2.8, $3 million of mitigation associated with 50 bedrooms and a, and a medical office. So, it is significant of what they've done before. Would we support the street program if we could do it? You know, there's a lot of takings that would have to be accessed, I mean, we have 300 feet of frontage there, 300, 400 feet of frontage, I don't know exactly off the top of my hand, but there's, there's other neighbors that would have to go along with it. Would we be willing to provide an easement? Sure. Um, I, I, you know, as, as I said before in the beginning of the meeting, but when we talk about mitigation, and we, we've gone through the Cape Cod Commission, they don't, never mind the compensatory land. Thank goodness we found some land that we also sold to Icewind, so the town could have a good deal. But, if you were to pay the cash, that's 200,000, or I think 170,000 an acre. We need a seven, seven acres, 7.5 acres. So, if you add that on top, you're, you're, you're pretty close to $4 million worth of, four and a half million dollars worth of mitigation as it stands today.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think the idea of putting forth an easement for future mitigation would be a smart move, and then all options could be explored.
I don't think that the proponent would have a, a problem putting forth an easement along the, the street layout if it needed to be widened. Now, would the populace of the neighborhood, that's gonna reduce their buffer area, but that's something that the town would have to work out with the neighbors.
Correct.
I think it's, if it's easy to do, we should do it.
Yeah, I just, I don't think the proponent wants to pay for a sidewalk network when you still need easements. If, if you want an easement on that land, and, and I, I believe that the proponent would, would agree to allow for a sidewalk network that goes by that development. I mean, I don't, I don't even think I need to run that by him. Why wouldn't he?
Yeah. I think that's something we have to look at, but we're gonna have to look at the road layouts. I know at one point in time, the town had 40-foot rightaways everywhere, so that goes... And the problem is, with that is, if you don't talk to the neighbors and they are not aware of it, that 40-foot rightaway through that property could be half of somebody's front yard, and that's happened before, so...
I'm not suggesting takings, I'm not suggesting easements. If it, if the layout allowed it, I think we should do, but if not, then no.
You, I believe you have, and Stu, just look at that if I'm correct, I think you have about eight or 10 feet presently off the paved surface towards our property line. So, when we're talking about that buffer, we're not talking about the buffer that still exists.
But that's on an 18-foot road, so you make that, that road 24 feet, you're gonna be right on the property line, so you would have to do an easement on the back side.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I don't think, you know, I, I think that I can say that if, if the town wanted an easement, as long as it was indemnification associated with people using that, then let's go for it. You wanna condition it, condition it.
I think, I think we need some time to take a look at that and, and consult with the people back at the town hall and figure out what the layout is and exactly what would be required, and then we could maybe look at that going forward, but...
Sure.
Other than that, okay. Mr. Sorrenti?
Yeah? Mike Sorrenti, I'm from Sagamore Beach. If you, I think Chris and, and Dan, you guys might go back to the post office in Sagamore Beach. They were made to put a sidewalk in front of that post office. It was a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere.
Right.
But it was for future, and now it's, now it's been realized, it's hooked up.
Right.
So, a sidewalk in front of the project isn't, I don't think it's unreasonable, but like I said, this goes back, I was 25, 30, maybe 35 years ago.
Probably 30 something years, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, that's a... And I, I walked my dog on Hunter's Brook Road, I used to.